With the Open Public Meetings Act, PL 1975, Chapter 231, adequate notice that this regular meeting of the Planning Board of the Township of Franklin has been provided. If we could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman in Barson?
Here.
Theodore Chase?
Here.
Erica in Sensio? No, in Sensio, no. Sam, well, let me say this, Sammy, Mustafa, Charles Brown, and Mahir Rafiq all asked to be excused today. Jennifer Ragnow?
Here.
Robert? I didn't get to her yet. Robert Thomas?
Here.
Rebecca Hilbert, who's walking in, and Chairman Racini?
Here. All right. So in terms of administrative, we have one resolution, the Wolf Campus, PLN 22-0016.
Move to approve.
I don't think you had your mic on.
Second.
Okay. Councilman in Barson?
Yes.
Theodore Chase?
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
Rebecca Hilbert?
Yes.
Chairman Racini?
Yes. Opening for public comments, again, related, not related to the application we're hearing tonight from Baldwist Realty, but on general planning, make a motion to open the meeting to the public.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is now open to the public for any general planning comment.
Hi, I'm Robin Sedam, 54 Skilman Lane in Franklin Township. I would just like to make a general comment to the Planning Board to please continue to consider green roofs overall in your work. The state of New Jersey just passed two weeks and two days ago the new inland floodwater regulations. Green roofs are a wonderful way to help accomplish what we need to do with the new regs. So I hope you start to see more of them in your work and that the township overall helps to promote them, if not require them. Thank you.
Robin, just a question. They passed it, sometimes there's a waiting period before it actually takes effect. Has it taken effect?
The municipality has one year to write our own ordinance to match it.
Okay.
And for plans that are complete, it doesn't apply, but plans that are not, they do encourage us to quickly get on with it so that we have more protection because they, in the new regs, they're forward-looking in terms of rain and they're using the 2100, or 2100, the year 2100 values, which bring the basic flood levels up more than two, at least two feet. So it's going to affect all of us, especially being so close to the river.
Is a township ordinance needed to require or to recommend this, or just is it more, give it more weight?
No, we are supposed to pass our own ordinance, as I understand it. I'm sure Tara can give us a little bit more definition. If we don't within a year, then the state automatically takes precedent that would apply.
That's helpful. Ted, you're still on the Environmental Commission, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Can you bring this, can you take an action, like bring this forward to, so the council can get an ordinance and ram your council so obviously?
Well, it's really up to Mark to write the, oh, yeah. I can tell you that the township is aware of the new law, there's a DEP issued a model ordinance, and we're currently working on a new ordinance to be introduced by council.
Good to hear.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rob.
It would also, it would also be helpful if you made these comments to the council themselves, if you haven't already done so.
Good point. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, seeing no other comments from the public, move to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No discussion points tonight, so we'll move right into the hearing for Baldwist Realty, PLN 22-0009.
Good evening, I'm, can you hear me? All right. Good evening, I'm John DeLuca of Boris Golden Foley Vinyelheim and Install on behalf of the applicant Baldwist Realty LLC. The subject property for this application is at 545-549 Weston Canal Road. It's at, it's also designated as Block 516.01, Lot 4.03. And before I get any further, I would just like to place on the record that this, as the Planning Board for the Township of Franklin, this board has the proper jurisdiction and authority to hear this matter, and also that all required notices have been published or served at least 10 days in advance of this hearing, providing all interested or impacted parties the opportunity to appear here tonight. So this property is in the BI zoning district where the proposed, where, we were proposing a warehouse, and as of the date of the application, that is a permitted use. Currently existing on the site is a greenhouse or nursery, which will be demolished. Our proposal is to construct a 62,500-square-foot warehouse with associated car parking, truck loading, landscaping, lighting, stormwater, and utility improvements. For this proposal, we are seeking preliminary and final site plan approval. We are also requesting C2 variance relief for driveway width, where 36 feet wide is permitted and 45 feet is proposed. I'll also note that the proposal previously required a variance, required variance relief for a deviation from landscaping and buffering requirements, but the proposal has since been amended to comply with the landscaping and buffer requirements. The applicant did previously appear before the Historic Commission, which looked favorably upon the proposal. The applicant and its experts have also reviewed the township's planning and engineering reports, among other reports, and through our presentation and testimony tonight, we will address many, if not all, of the comments that appear in those reports. So with that in mind, we will have three witnesses the board will hear from tonight. First, you will hear from Matthew Sharo, who is our site engineer, as well as our professional planner, so I've requested he be qualified as an expert in both. You will hear from David Ennis, who is an expert in the field of architecture, and Corey Chase, an expert in the field of traffic engineering. So unless the board has any housekeeping items, I'll ask to call my first witness and that he be sworn in to testify.
Please proceed.
Should I raise your right hand, please? Some of you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you out.
I do, I do.
Name and address for the record, please.
It's 1904 Main Street, Lake Como, New Jersey, 07719.
And you wish to be qualified both as an engineer and a planner?
Yes, I do.
Have you previously appeared before this board?
A long time ago for the Wawa on Route 27 in Juliette as an engineer, not as a planner. But since then, that was one of my first hearings, thank you very much. Appreciate that, guys. And since then, I've, I've been all over the state testifying in dozens of municipalities around here, North Brunswick, New Brunswick, Piscataway, Bridgewater.
You're qualified.
Licensed in the state of New Jersey?
Licensed in the state of New Jersey as a professional engineer and as a professional planner.
And the towns that you appeared in front of were both as engineer and planner?
Engineer, except for North Brunswick planner.
Okay.
Okay. Can you just state your name into the microphone?
Sure. Matthew Sharo, S-H-A-R-O.
Just let the record show that Erica and Sensio just showed up.
Duly noted. Okay.
All right. Thank you, Matthew. So I see you brought an exhibit here with you tonight. Can you please walk us through your exhibit and some of the technical engineering aspects of the proposal? Sure. So the first exhibit, I'll just call it A1, is an aerial map exhibit. This is essentially Sheet 2 of the site plan applica, or site plan package that was submitted with the application. We just added some color to it so that the, you know, the different lines pop. Essentially, the property is highlighted in yellow in the center of the, of the sheet. For purposes of this, of this exhibit, north is to the right of the screen.
And this was prepared under your direction and control?
Correct, yep. Dynamic Engineering, and the date is 6/7/2023. So the property in question, there's two properties known as Block 516.01, Lots 4.03 and 5. The address is 545 and 549 Weston Canal Road. It's also County Route 623. Just get into a little bit of the existing conditions here. The first one is the surrounding uses. To the north, again, north is to the right, you have Weston Canal Road, as well as the Delaware Raritan Canal beyond it. To the east or towards the bottom of the page, you have farm and warehouses. To the south or to the left of the page, you have the townhome complex, Summerfield. And then to the west or towards the top of the page is the newly constructed Ballfields, as well as one residential home along Weston Canal. As noted, we are along the Delaware Raritan Canal, so we are in Zone A for the DRCC. So we have to meet all those conditions with this application.
And can I just ask what the status of your application at the DRCC is?
We're just waiting on approval from here at this point.
Okay, so you've addressed all their comment.
Yep, so we're, we're basically through there. It's just a matter of getting this approval and then moving on, because we can't get their final approval, so we have this approval.
Just helpful to know, because a lot of applicants comment they're, they're deep in the weeds with DRCC, and of course, everything is conditioned upon all final approvals, but I just wanted to ask.
Yep, of course. No, it's a great question.
I had the impression that they must have told you quite a lot to do, looking at earlier and later versions of the plan.
Correct. Between working with them, as well as your own professionals, the plan has morphed into what we are here today. A little bit more about existing conditions, then I'll get into the nitty-gritty of the application. Just important things to note, the current lot is the Alook Farm and residential lot. The residential lot is a single-family home with multiple accessory structures. That, that is located up here in this, this top corner of the property, has frontage on Weston Canal Road. The farm has a residential building, as well as, you know, accessory barns, sheds, and other structures throughout the property. As you can see, this is a very uniquely shaped property. We have approximately 250, or sorry, excuse me, 610 feet of frontage along Weston Canal Road, but that necks down and has this, this funky curve in the property, and that necks down to about 250 feet at the rear of the property. So it is a uniquely shaped property in this area. Topography also is unique. From Weston Canal Road, there's approximately 30 foot of grade change from the roadway to the rear of the property. So as you can see, and as we go through the details of the application and site plan, there are some, you know, funky driveways and some retaining walls to make up that grade. And then lastly, there is an existing front yard setback to Weston Canal Road. That is the existing home that is along there. It's 2.7 feet from the roadway, right away property line. Moving on, this is just a quick exhibit that I like to show to kind of give the board an opportunity to see how the project is going to look over, you know, with the surrounding uses. I'll get into a closer-up image of this so that you get it, you know, the real detail of the project. So this is what we're proposing tonight, a 55,920-square-foot warehouse with six, well, that's the warehouse portion, 6,573 square foot of office, for a total of 62,500 square foot of total building area. There are six loading stalls and 52 parking stalls. We've, as I've said before, we've worked with the township professionals, DRCC, the county, very in-depth to get to where we are tonight in this presentation. And happy to note that this, this proposal tonight is compliant with all regulations except for the one driveway regulation. And just for the record, this is aerial overlay, prepared by Dynamic Engineering, dated 6/7/23. All right, last exhibit, and you'll be looking at this one for a while, I apologize. This is the overall site plan rendering, prepared by Dynamic Engineering, dated 6/7/23. So this is essentially Sheet 4 and 13 of your site plan package that was, that was provided to you as part of the application. Sheet 4 is the-
Yeah, so the one, the one just before this that you showed, after A1, A2, and this is A3.
Sorry, yep, this is A3. Thank you. Appreciate that. So this is Sheet 4 and Sheet 13. Sheet 4 is the site, the overall site plan, and Sheet 13 is the landscape plan. So what we did was we combined the two of them to kind of give you a good idea of what's going on on the site with the landscaping, and then we added color for the, you know, the building and the different types of pavement, and all the new trees, and, and all the improvements going on on the site. I'm actually going to take a moment to zoom in a little bit. Rest of it doesn't. All right, so hopefully everyone can see that better. All right, so I'm just going to take you, you know, kind of a walk through this, this site. I'm going to start at Weston Canal Road. As you come in off Weston Canal Road, there is that 45-foot drive, driveway located here. The permitted driveway width is 36 feet, 45 due to the nature of the use, and the WB50 tractor trailers coming in and out of the, the driveway for safe and efficient access in and out in, in both directions. And working with the county, you know, we determined that the 45-foot driveway would, would be required here.
I just have a question, a clarification. You referenced the type of tractor trailer that would, would be entering and exiting the site. Now, for, for the board and anyone else who might not know what kind of tractor trailer it is, is that like the large-sized tractor trailer, or is that a different-sized tractor?
The WB50 is your typical tractor trailer that you see on the, there's, there's large ones, but this is the typical one that you see on the highways. So as you enter the site through that driveway, you're going to do this little, the first little turn, come along this straightaway, we call a little S-turn. Again, that helps get up, get up to that higher grade level that the, the property has that grade change. So as you come up to the main portion of the project, you have the choice to either go to the south or straight, or make the left into the main parking area of the property. So I'm going to start with the main parking area of the property. I'm actually going to zoom in a little bit. Better, and I'll work my way around. All right, so this is the main parking area for, along the frontage of the building. So as you come in, you can see there's parking located along the, along the front of the building and opposite. It's two-way circulation through here. A couple of interesting points in this area is we have two EV charging stations, which meet the new state statutes. We have a ride-share shelter and a sign typical of this type of use. We also have a bike rack located up here as well. The dumpster trash enclosure is located at the northeast corner of this parking lot. Then as you, you know, as you, if you were to go to the rear of the building, you'd come around, this gray-hatched area is your six truck-loading areas. This is, this is relatively small for this type of building. And then one of the things we are doing is we are reducing this truck court from 130 feet to 110 feet to make it for the WB50-designed vehicle. As you pass those, those loading zones, there's still two-way traffic vehicle circulation along the side of the building, going back towards the rear of the building. There's 18 more parking stalls here. These parking stalls are for, you know, access for some employees or workers at the rear of the building. And then continuing along, you have your two-way circulation wrapping around the other side of the building, between the building and the property line, back out to your front parking area. So there's two-way circulation throughout the site, which is great. You have parking in the front and rear, which is very convenient for your employees.
Do you have a tenant yet?
No, there is no tenant, so this is... So as I stated before, let me zoom out a little bit. As you can see, this is a pretty unique shape. Again, that goes to the unique property, property boundaries of the site, as well as the, the grade change between the Weston Canal Road and the back of the site. So, you know, it is, it is a little unique. You probably don't see this, this type of design too often. We also have to the nor, to the west, the PAC zone, the planned adult community zone, and they have certain buffer and setback requirements, so we had to meet those as well. There's a 50-foot buffer requirement, so you can see along the west side or top of the page here, you see that 50-foot buffer through here. And they also have 100-foot setback requirements, so that's why you have the, this shape of the building. So we're meeting both of those requirements for the PAC zone. As I stated before, it's, you know, we, we're meeting all the bulk standards, parking standards, loading standards, except for that one driveway entrance 45 feet when 36 feet is proposed, or is required. As far as utilities go, right now, the property is, is serviced by well and septic, but the applicant has agreed to provide a 3,000, 3,400-foot utility extension from Randolph Road. That basically will be for your gas, your water, your sewer service. So that will be an extension for all those services. And then what that provides mainly, the fact that you won't have septic field on site, and you don't have a fire, you know, a fire tank on site for fire service. You'll have the water lines, you'll have the sewer systems, you'll have that gas system. It also will provide for additional hydrants along Weston Canal Road, along that 35, 3,400, or 3,400, yeah, 3,400-foot of, of extension. So there's a lot of pluses for that as well, for the utilities. All those utilities will be underground, and they will come into the site underground and service the building underground as well. As far as landscaping, as you can see, there's a pretty extensive landscaping plan here. I'm not going to get into all the species and, and types of plantings, but I will note that there's 286 new trees, including shade trees, ornamental trees, and evergreen trees. There's 276 new evergreen and deciduous shrubs throughout the site. As you can see, most of the buffering occurs along the PAC zone and the, and the landscaping along the Weston Canal Road to provide that screening and that buffer to both of those areas. So total, there's 562 new trees and shrubs throughout the site. We do meet the, the replacement requirements, the tree replacement requirements. We're required to have 53 new trees, so we are well above that. And then we're also compliant with the, the DRCC landscaping, as well as your scenic overlay standards. And I hate to hit this again, but we're going to hit grading again and stormwater. So there is that, that 30-foot change between Weston Canal and the, and the rear of the property, which is important from a visibility thing, as well as a stormwater item. So the stormwater throughout here, you know, was pretty interesting stormwater design. You have a lot of mix of different types of new green infrastructure throughout the site, which is really important and meets all the new 2020 DEP stormwater regulations, as well as your municipal regulations. So it's, it's, the stormwater is managed and by a couple different types of uses, so I'll, I'll go through them real quick. We have previous pavement on site. That's this lighter gray pavement area. We have biotension basins. Those are the basins up front here. We also have underground infiltration basin, which is under the parking lot up, up in front. We have manufactured, or green infrastructure manufactured treatment devices, which is along the end of this driveway. And then we also have the green roof, which our architect will get into a little bit as well. So all of those different BNP's are all, meet the new green infrastructure requirements, are all approved by the DEP. And I also just like to note that we are, we do have our stormwater approvals for SCD as well as DEP, and have gone through DRCC, just waiting on that final approval. And then lastly, lighting. It's actually minimal lighting on this site. We're proposing five aerial lights, mostly within the area of the parking areas. And then we have some 14 building-mounted lights. The aerial lights are set at 25 feet in mounting height, and the building lights range from 15 feet to 20 feet. All the lights are high-efficient LED downlit lighting with shields protecting it from spread out off the property. And it's also important to note that we meet all the township ordinances. That's it as far as the proposed project and improvements go. On the property, I would just like to hit a couple things in your professional's letter, if I, if I could go through them. I'll start with the planner's letter. There was two sections that I just want to hit real quick. He had some, some bullet points on the scenic corridor ordinance. He specifically pointed out a couple of the items within this ordinance, so I just want to run through those real quick, if you don't mind. The first one is signage including design and prohibition on internally illuminated signs. All the signs that we are proposing here meet and are compliant with your sign ordinance. Second one is design of fences and walls. So this is what Mr. DeLuca mentioned before. We had a different type of fence on, on the plan at first, but the applicant has agreed to install the six-foot-high solid vinyl fence that is required. So all that kind, all those variances go away, and all those, you know, worries go away. Third thing is preservation and protection of the aesthetic character or natural features such as rock outcrops, individual, individual trees, or stands of trees, hedges, et cetera. There wasn't much on the site to begin with. We are proposing to keep some existing trees along the western, northeast, and northwestern property lines. So, you know, we're doing our best there, but there wasn't much as far as features like outcroppings and hedge grows and stuff on this property. Placement of buildings to minimize view of building, including preservation of existing tree lines, wood lines, and hedge grows. So one of the cool things about this property is we do have that significant buffer along Weston Canal Road. We do have a grade change along Weston Canal Road, and we do have, and our architect will get into this during his testimony, we have an interesting feature, green wall along Weston Canal Road. And the wall, and the building sits back 210 feet from the roadway. So I think that definitely minimizes, you know, that, that area of Weston Canal. Next one emphasizes the preservation of existing hedge grows, kind of same thing as the other one, the other one that I noted before. Underground utilities, all utilities are going to be underground, as I stated. And then the last one, buildings to be designed in harmony with the corridors, topography, view sheds, architectural styles, colors, character and appearance. Our architect will hit that in, in his testimony. The second point in the planner's letter that I wanted to hit was the design standards for business and industrial uses. Just four bullet points that he specifically pointed out, so I just want to run through them real quick. The first one, loading docks and truck parking shall be, you know, minimize their view from adjoining roadways. And I hate to keep harping on this, but we do have that grade change, we have that significant buffer along Weston Canal, and the, the, the loading dock is to the side of the building, so we are minimizing that view shed of the loading docks from Weston Canal Road. Sides of the building facing and visible from adjoining roadway should be designed and finished in an attractive manner and should present architecturally as, as the front of the building. I mentioned it quickly, we have a green wall there, our architect will hit it in his testimony as well. Third one, mechanical equipment, your HVAC, your, you know, your big, you know, AC units, refrigeration units, should be screened from view from adjoining roadways. So that's, will be hit by our architect as well, but it's all screened from the roadway. And again, we have that 210 feet of, of distance from the building to the roadway, so that will not be visible. And then lastly, take into consideration non-automotive modes of transportation. So I think we did that with the shelter for the ride-share, calling out the signage for the, the ride-share and the hail share signs, as well as bike rack and the EV stalls. So that was the planner's letter, and if I can quickly go through, there was a couple comments in the engineer's letter that I just want to hit.
Oh, do you want to talk about the sidewalk?
Yep, that's an engineer's letter, so I can, I can hit that.
It was in the, it was in Mark's letter as well.
Okay, so, so the, the sidewalk, it's kind of, it's kind of in the middle ground here. It's, it's not required for the, it's not warranted for the scenic corridor. It's not really, you know, the scenic corridor actually doesn't want sidewalks, doesn't want that extra, you know, coverage within their area. And the county didn't request it either, and there's no sidewalks, you know, in this, along this area. So I think we would, we would propose not to have the sidewalk, just because the scenic corridor kind of conflicts the other ordinance, so.
If you did, would you have to change your landscape plan?
I'd have to, I'd have to look. I doubt it. I think we can sneak it in between the roadway and the, and the, where the landscape starts.
Well, if Charles were here, he'd have a different opinion, but I'm perfectly fine with not constructing one. And it's not just because there's no other sidewalks in the area, though that's certainly a good reason, because, you know, well, it is and it isn't, right? We, future applications or backfilling, you know, we've come to regret, like 10 years ago, not requiring sidewalks, because now new applications are coming in, we can actually make it network. But that aside, it's not a pedestrian-friendly road with the grading and the sightlines, to me. And if you were going to walk anywhere, I'd go over the tow path.
Exactly.
Is this an application where we would get a sidewalk contribution in lieu of one?
I mean, yeah, but that's, I mean, it is in, it is in a design standard, so if that's something you wanted to impose, I think you could-
something you wanted to impose, I think you can do that.
But how would that work? I mean, I'm all in favor of a contribution to sidewalk. I mean, we'll construct them elsewhere in town, like when we get a contribution to tree fund. But I'm just concerned how, I mean, and if you're willing to do it, maybe this is a moot point. But since they're in the scenic corridor, and the scenic corridor discourages a sidewalk, it's sort of a catch-twenty-two, right? Now you're saying, well, since you're not going to build one, we're going to, we're going to make it contribute. So, I mean.
Well, I think it's two things. First, I think the first thing is the board can discuss whether you want to impose that or not. And the other question you had is how do you do it? The fees based on the engineer, the applicant's engineer does an estimate of the cost of the sidewalk for the width of their frontage, and our engineer confirms that that estimate is accurate, and then they do a payment in lieu, equal to, equal to that amount. That's how it's done, whether it's done as a board.
I mean, the applicant would be inclined not to contribute, considering the fact that the scenic overlay does discourage against the sidewalk. But if it was something that the board was going to impose, then we're not, that's not an issue that we're going to fight the board on.
Yeah, I mean, it's always, it's always nice to have, so we can construct, I mean, just in terms of, like, public benefit, right? Overall, it would be good to have elsewhere in town. So, I mean, I would, I would recommend it.
One last chance for it to be voluntary.
If the board is going to put that as a condition of approval, then of course my client would consent, but it's not something that we would, we would volunteer. Thank you.
Fair enough. I mean, I won't prolong it. I don't, I don't know that there's, I'd say, well, can you give us half of what that is, because we'll split the difference. But maybe that's too, too complex, too complex, either you give it or not, so.
I have a quick question, since we're talking about scenic corridor also. You said you were going to put a vinyl fence up. Can you point out where the fence is going to go on that?
Sure. So the fence would go along the PAC zone buffer area.
Okay, what color vinyl fence are you thinking?
We could do white.
Quite frankly, I don't think white goes along with the scenic corridor. And I'd really, my preference, I'm only one person on the board, would be a wood fence for that area.
Solid wood fence?
Solid wood fence, natural color, not, not white. You want to put a vinyl fence up and convince me that, make it dark brown or something, but not white.
Green. Maybe we can, maybe we can ask a question as well to the architect, because I believe there's some design aspects to the, to the building you might want to hear about, and maybe if the fence was compatible with the design of the building, so maybe we can.
I'll listen, but it's going to be hard to convince me that a white vinyl fence would go in scenic corridor along the Delaware Canal.
Something earth tone, or, and/or something that complements the building, but yes, a stark white fence might not be the best.
All right, let's, let's circle back to that. The architect will either figure out a different color or a different material or both.
Now, Mr. Shauer, did you have more comments to address?
Yeah, I just have the four comments that I want to address in the engineer's letter, if I can, real quick. I'll make them quick. We've talked about them already, so it'll be easy to go through. The first one is item six on page two, deals with that, shrinking the truck court down from one-hundred-and-thirty feet to one-hundred-and-ten feet for the WB-50 truck, so we'll agree to that. Same page, item seven, deals with the sidewalk along the scenic corridor, so we've talked about that enough, so, you know, we'll do, you know, as discussed, what the board, you know, feels is right there. Item nine on the same page, talks about seeking the variance for the forty-five-foot driveway when we're, when thirty-six is permitted. So, you know, I'll, I'll talk about that a little bit later in my planning testimony, but we've already talked about safe and, you know, efficient traffic exiting and entering the site. And then the last one is comment nine on page four. And this just deals with a little bit of, there's a couple of bullet points in there, but the fourth bullet point deals with the slope of this driveway as you come out of this turn, up the driveway, and into the main parking area and main area of the site. We have it currently at eight-point-three percent. Engineer would like a little less at five percent. Your ordinance allows fifteen percent. So I think we're right, we're right there in the middle, but, you know, we will work with the board engineer and CME to get, you know, try to reduce that down under that eight-point-eight-three percent, and try to flatten that roadway, the driveway out a little bit. And then all the other comments in the engineer's letter, we can comply with. I'm not going to hit them all.
Thank you. Unless the board has any further questions for Mr. Shauer, engineering expert, then I'd like to call my next witness.
I have, I have one, and we'll open up to the board for any questions. Can you talk a little bit about your, your stream corridor preservation? I mean, I was reading the DRCC canal, and, you know, they know, you've delineated it and everything. I mean, high level, you know, you've delineated it, they mentioned previous encroachments from the previous use that were already there, like the gravel lot and some structures. But just, I guess what I'm asking is just describe how you're doing your best to preserve that.
Yep, so it's one of the reasons why the building is set so far back as well. We tried to get the building and a majority of the site improvements out of that corridor. As you can see, that corridor runs right along here, that three-hundred-foot corridor. So we did get the building, we got a majority of the loading out of it, and, you know, you know, quite a bit of this parking. So, and then the rest of it within this corridor is going to be all new landscaping. Just this roadway is essentially the only thing through there. So we are, that, that's how we feel the preservation is happening. Currently, if I go back to the aerial exhibit, a majority of the site improvements are within that corridor now. As you can see, all the improvements with the existing residential and the barns and the sheds, they're all within that corridor. So what we're doing is we are trying to back out of that corridor and preserving that corridor as much as possible, as well as, from a stormwater perspective, we are significantly improving water quality, water recharge throughout this, this portion of the property. You know, because we are in the DRCC, there's currently no water quality measures on this property, so we, per DEP, we have to increase it to eighty percent. Per DRCC, we have to have ninety-five percent TSS removal for water quality, so that's a significant improvement to what's out there now, when there is none out there today. And we're meeting all the reductions in groundwater recharge. So I think a mix of the pulling a majority out, the, the development outside of this corridor, and then the significant landscaping, and then the significant increase in stormwater management, really meet that, that, the idea of this corridor.
And, and the, and you satisfied the DRCC within that? Because there'll probably be a little more draconian, just by law, than, than we can be.
Of course.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. It's a great question.
Mr. Chairman, just a few questions. I'm just going to piggyback a little bit on the chairman's question about, so, does this plan that you're presenting, this represents what the DRCC staff has approved?
Correct. I have to check what REV it is, but yeah, it's essentially this, this plan.
Okay. Did they impose requirements, like use of native plantings and things like that?
Yeah, and so did your, actually, I meant to mention that. So, so did your environmental commission, and we'll work with both the DRCC, your environmental commission, and the professionals to really get the, a good selection of those native trees throughout this property, if they aren't already.
So, so the, so the screening that's proposed in that, in the front of the building, in terms of the size and nature, and whether it's deciduous or evergreen, you know, that, the number and mixture of those type plants were, were per the DRCC review?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Can you go back, you had that other exhibit where you showed the surrounding, a kind of a larger area where it showed the surrounding uses? Can you give the board, you had mentioned the PAC zone, but could you give the board a sense of the surrounding land uses?
Sure.
Maybe some of the distances to, you had mentioned the PAC zone, which is a residential zone, but, you know, the proximity to, to some, you know, the nearby residential uses?
Sure. So to the south is that townhome complex there. So this yellow line represents a two-hundred-foot line. So beyond that, you have this swath of, of, of trees, and then the townhomes. So without pulling a number, and I can, if you'd, you'd like me to, this is... So from the, from our property to that first townhome, even the parking, about six-hundred-and-fifty feet. And then to the, to the north, or, sorry, to the west, to the top of the page, you have that ball field, it looks like it's under construction still on this aerial, and then you have this resident. So this is essentially, you know, fifty feet from the property line. This is a little flag part of the lot that comes down to Weston Canal to have access to this ball field, and then that's the residential lot, the residential right there. I can zoom in a little. And then that's, that's really it from residential perspective.
And then to the east is, is that the water company?
The east is the little farm here, and then that water company, solar field here, and then the water company is all through here.
Okay. All right, thank you. I just wanted the board to see the larger picture. The change in the grade to address the engineer's comment, is that going to change the site plan in any way, as far as the delineation or the alignment of the roadways, or internal roadways?
No, we might just, we might just, you know, at the higher, you know, at the points in here, might have just lowered a little bit, or make it a little steeper to lower the long run a little bit more, or in this turn, increase the slope a little bit. Like I said, we meet the, we meet the requirement of fifteen percent with the eight-point-eight-three percent, which is pretty standard. So, we, but we will try to lower that, you know, as much as we can, possibly can.
Okay.
Without changing, without changing the layout or, or, you know, increasing that driveway.
Okay.
What, you're lowering the level at which the building will be?
No, we would just, we would play with the slope and the driveway alone.
Just playing with the slope and the driveway.
Yeah, we wouldn't change the building elevations, we wouldn't change the elevations around the building. It would just be, you know, playing with the, you know, from Weston Canal Road up to this, this, this truck court and this parking here. So we can, we have a little play in those drive, those additional drive aisles that we can make up some room. So we'll, we'll do our best to just use this portion of the, of the site to flatten that driveway out a little bit.
Okay, then two, I think, related questions. This warehouse is different than other ones that we've seen. It's generally smaller. It has a lot less truck bays than we normally would see. And I think we heard that the truck bays are smaller than normal, is that right? They're not the sixty-eight foot?
Correct. They're, they're for the WB-50.
Okay. So I guess it's really a two-part question. Have you had a conversation with your client about what types of warehouse tenants might occupy this? And then, so that's the first question. Then also, long-term, I guess, how do prospective tenants, how are they going to be made aware that this won't accommodate the typical longer tractor-trailer?
I don't know that, I didn't have that conversation, as far as, you know, this, we, this was a spec warehouse, so. And then as far as making them aware, would just, you know, they would have the site plans and would know that this is, you know, a one-hundred-and-ten-foot truck bay, so.
Those are my questions, Mr. Chairman.
What about a condition for maximum WB-50? Because that's all you're planning for?
Yeah, that's all. Yeah, that's, that's what the truck court would fit, so.
I thought of another question, which I wasn't going to ask, because you said you 're having a green roof, correct?
Yep. That'll be the architect.
Okay. It sort of bleeds into your area, because what I was going to ask is, I can't recall if this is a large enough warehouse to be solar-ready. But of course, if you're going to have a green roof, you can't have solar, so.
I think solar's, I think solar's a hundred, a hundred thousand square feet.
Oh.
Yep, and it's sixty-two-five.
Never mind. I asked Jim, but he didn't, he didn't know the answer, so.
That's quite all right.
Ted.
Now, I noticed in my latest version of plans, the trees at the rear, sort of making a rear buffer against the PAC or whatever it's called, you have sort of square blocks of cedars and white pines and holly. Why not have instead, say, furthest up the slope, the red cedars, and then the holly, or even the other way around? And then the white pines, which we're always concerned about, they're losing their lower branches, have them lowest down. For when they, it'll look more natural, particularly if they're not in straight lines, but a little bit wavy in, in the planting, but really a succession of the trees from one type to another. And then if the white pines are furthest down the slope, it won't matter if they lose their lower branches, because they'll be so far down the slope, the people up the hill won't see anyway.
That's a great comment. We can definitely take that and different, use the different trees to undulate along that back property line. Make it a little bit more natural-looking, and use the different heights of the different trees to get that, to get that look. I agree with you, we can do that.
Good, good, thank you.
Yep. I noted it here, too.
Any other board questions, or you can?
I had one question about the driveway. Did that go before the canal commission, the forty-five feet? Did they have a comment on that?
No.
I'm inclined, and you haven't even had to present testimony to justify it, to, to be in favor of that, because I don't want any chance of the trucks turning out of your driveway and having to go into the other lane on Canal Road, because that is a narrow road. And I think that that's a problem as a township, we're going to have to address in a little, in other areas, because a lot of intersections are simply not wide enough for what we're getting. I was just concerned that the canal commission might have a negative comment on the visual intrusion on the canal that's such a wide driveway it might make. But if they didn't, then so be it.
Yep. We agree with you that of the trucks turning into opposite lanes, we've worked with the county, we have a traffic engineer here, that's going to talk about that as well, so.
That's a county road.
Yeah, I mean, the county would have to sign off on it, but, I mean, it does make sense for the reasons Bob stated, so. I mean, it's kind of a, you know, you do, you do do severe grade change there. And, and, you know, coming in, as well as going out, I think you want, you know, maximal freedom of movement. It's not a wide road, and, and it's just, it, it sort of makes sense. I mean, I don't think, if the DNR canal commission would, did not say anything, and they surely would, so.
There's, there's other driveways that are the same width up and down this corridor, so.
Okay. Next witness, your architect?
Read there.
Raise your right hand, please. Sadly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you got.
I do.
Name and address, please.
David Ennis, three-five-two-sixth Street, Brooklyn, New York, one-one-two-one-five.
Licensed architect in the state of New Jersey?
I'm an NCARB licensed architect in New Jersey. I have a licensed architect onboard my firm.
Testified before other boards in the state of New Jersey?
I have.
Which ones would those be?
Spring Lake I testified at, Jersey City I've testified at several times, Newark I've testified at, and Pensacola.
And have your credentials always been accepted in those municipalities?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'm inclined to recommend that we accept him, and the fact that he's not licensed in the state of New Jersey himself, that simply goes to the weight which you would give his testimony. uh, that simply goes to the weight, uh, which you would give, uh, his testimony.
Okay, just out of curiosity, what, what did you say here, an N-CARB?
N-CARB is a national licensing, uh, organization where I can, in effect, just pay them a fee to get my New Jersey license.
Are you licensed in the state of New York?
I am licensed in the state of New York.
Yeah, then, yeah, of course, I mean, I would accept him anyway, but that's actually good to know that he has a license in some state, it's just not, no, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Ennis.
Thank you.
Now, I see you're displaying an exhibit that, uh, we will kindly mark as A4. Uh, if you could please walk us through the architectural plans and some of the other aspects of the?
Yes, yes. Just, just to start off, I, I, uh, I want to thank the board for having us here and the opportunity to do such a unique building for a warehouse. Um, as, as was described in the last, uh, presentation, uh, the, the building, um, form was created by a lot of the site constraints and it's not a typical warehouse form. What, what really is happening with the building is it's almost as if it's two buildings. There's sort of this big block that's, uh, to the north or the front of the building and then, uh, a thinner, longer block to the back. And, uh, it took the design idea from that to try and create, in effect, two different types of buildings. The longer building, which would be out of view from the, from the scenic corridor and from Weston Road, would be more of your traditional warehouse-type building, whereas the front building or the front portion of the building would want to be addressing more of, uh, let's say, more of a commercial-type building. It doesn't want to read so much as a warehouse as much as it wants to read more as a, uh, a commercial-type building.
Yeah, we're going to mark this as A5.
A5?
Yeah, and you can just mark them in sequence from there with any, anything that's colorized. So has many exhibits as you have.
I have several.
Put them in sequence for me, fine.
I, I, just a point, point of order. I, I had stated this was A4, did I miss it in exhibit?
Oh, maybe you're right. Um, how many did you have for?
Yeah, we had, A3 was the combined site and landscape plan.
Okay, so that, I'm sorry, A, it started A4.
No problem, I just wanted, for, for sake of the record, thank you.
And all these were prepared under your direction and control or by yourself personally?
By myself personally.
Thank you.
So that's, you know, this is just sort of a, a mirror of, of, uh, the, the site plan before, it's, it's more of just sort of a diagram, but it shows a 62, 500-square-foot, um, building. This is more of an architectural plan of the, uh, of the building and what you can see here with the lighter blue, that's your traditional warehouse space. You've got a gray area here, uh, or, or taupe area here that is, uh, your loading, shipping, receiving area. And then there's, um, an main entry here with the ceremonial stair and then a sort of ground floor office here and then your employee, um, bathrooms. I have a blow-up of this coming up later if you need to look at it in more detail.
A5.
Yes, this will be A5. I, I've got, A5, we started with A4, okay. Do I need to, uh, tell you the names of each one as I go through?
It would be helpful.
Okay.
Please.
Okay. So on A5, um, it's the overall site plan. Again, we've got a little bar here, so we've got the, uh, the loading dock here. Loading docks typically do not need to have, um, double-height space, so this lent itself to being able to have an upper level of offices without changing the height of the building. So the overall height of the building is still the same as the 40-foot height going forward. So on A6, you can see, um, the second floor. The second floor is for the employees. This could be for your shipping and receiving, uh, or, or your drayage people or all these other employees that might be there. There's storage there, there's the employee bathrooms, there's a reception area, and there's also some, um, elevator lifts, uh, to get you up there. Um, again, it's just showing then the, the double-height space here. So this is just the functional aspects of this, of this building. Uh, again, here's, here's a blow-up of the, uh, this is A7. This is a blow-up of the, um, ground level that shows the ground floor office, the ground floor main entry with the ceremonial stair up, and then your shipping, receiving, employee lounge, employee toilet rooms, and then a dedicated means of egress, uh, from upstairs. And then the other means of egress from upstairs would be through the ceremonial stair out. Uh, this is a blow-up then of that upper level which shows your, your two, uh, stair cores and your elevator, I mean, sorry, your, um, toilet rooms and everything. And it's really just trying to show that, you know, we, we're providing for, uh, uh, not just the warehouse space, but, uh, for the employees. Again, this is the long face, uh, this is A8, exhibit 8. The east elevation, which is, uh, uh, against, uh, facing the water, uh, facility, water treatment plant, um, is just your standard, um, concrete, uh, tilt-up concrete-paneled warehouse system. Uh, the DRCC recommended that we do earth tones, a taupe or light green, almost like, uh, uh, chairman's shirt. It's really where we get the, uh, north elevation and the south elevation that we start to get a little bit more active, uh, where we then included a, uh, a biophilic or a green wall. And what we're proposing is to have, uh, a pinned, a pin-mounted, uh, stainless steel cable system onto the wall. This is stock, you can just buy this. And what this allows for is, um, uh, not a, um, not a, not a clinging vine, but a creeping vine, so it won't damage the building at all. And it also keeps it in control, so it doesn't spread all over the place. But a real, uh, uh, opportunity to have a ground-based vine system climbing up the side of the building. Uh, we would, we would propose to use native plants. Uh, some native plants that come to my mind as, um, readily, uh, hardy for this environment would be grapevines, uh, would be an excellent thing. It would be a great, uh, pollinators and, uh, contribute to some biodiversity. Another one, uh, is honeysuckle, which kind of gets a bad rap for a lot of people, but one of the nice things about honeysuckle is it's green all year round. It gets brown in the summertime, at the beginning of the summertime when everything else is in bloom, so it's kind of nice. But it really, you know, it really lends itself to being green all year round. And I'm sure in coordination with your office and, uh, and the, uh, DRCC, we can come up with, um, some native plants. The other thing that is, um, of interest here is we have the glass and metal, sort of little bustles, uh, that are the entries. And these are at a lower elevation, these are only at 30 feet high because they don't need to be the 40 feet high for the, um, for the warehouse space. And it also, it drops the scale down, uh, and I've got some renderings coming up that can help show that. But it really, it, it helps to reinforce sort of the, the, the feeling that, that this front building, if you will, is more, uh, of, of a human scale and not this, you know, giant east elevation that we've got over, not all that. A9 is the roof plan, and on the roof plan, this is where we have the extensive green roof. Uh, there's two real kinds of green roofs. Uh, if, if you guys don't know, I can explain it, but the, the, there's intensive green roof, which is one that you habitate. This is an extensive green roof, which is, is sort of non-habitable. Uh, this would be, uh, installed as a, um, a tray system. These are, uh, a cedum uh, that, that come completely sort of from the, from the manufacturer. DuPont makes them, they're, these are, you know, readily available. Um, they just get placed on. I was just anecdotally, uh, the associate architect for the Javits Center renovation and expansion, and that was the largest green roof that we put on there, uh, at the time. I'm not sure if it still is anymore. Hopefully it's not, but at the time, um, it was the largest green roof. A lot of different, um, aspects of a green roof, uh, besides just, um, the biodiversity. One of the things that, that was mentioned in the engineering, uh, testimony is that they, um, do slow down the, uh, rainwater runoff, although it's not something that's, uh, a calculated, um, or able to be put into the calculations. I would recommend as a way of, uh, if you are writing legislation to really figure that out, um, to help reinforce the need for it. Uh, it, it seems like to me that if you're going to put on a green roof, that maybe we could reduce some of the onsite disturbance for these, you know, retention basins by putting it on the roof. But regardless, it does physically slow the rainwater off. It also provides for, uh, an evaporative cooling effect. Evaporative cooling is, um, like if you're under an arbor, right, or a trellis, what happens is the water in the plants, when the sun's hitting it, the water turns to gas and evaporates. It, it needs a heat effusion, it's called, for that to happen, to change from water to gas. And that's actually being drawn out of the building itself, so it keeps the building cooler. Uh, a third factor that's, um, a benefit to a building owner, and I'm really just saying this more as a way for you to entice developers to, to use this system, is a green roof lasts longer than a traditional roof, mainly through the fact that it, it doesn't get the UV rays hitting the EPDM surface. It's, it's hitting, hitting the, um, hitting the green roof. Our, our view was we're building the roof anyway, right? A 62, 5,000-square-foot roof, we're building it anyway. We might as well make it useful, we might as well make it do something. And so that's what we're doing with this. And this is A9, I'm sorry. A10 is just a, uh, a, um, enlarged view of the elevation that shows the, uh, partial biophilic walls. It shows the, um, glass and metal entryway and, and office. It also shows how we're trying to integrate some of these, um, vines or, or the, uh, biophilic wall into the loading dock side. We, obviously, we can't do it at the loading dock because, you know, they, they just wouldn't survive, we wish we could. But we really want to have them as a ground base growing up, so we're putting them off a little bit to the, uh, to the south. And then this is a, a quick little rendering. Uh, I'm not showing any of the site because I, I wanted to sort of concentrate on the, um, architecture. But again, you can see on this, uh, A11, um, where we have the smaller little bustles that are the offices. We have the biophilic walls shown here. And, uh, we have sort of the, uh, sort of the buff color, uh, natural color, uh, earth-tone color for the main sort of north building. And for the warehouse, south building, that's more of the taupe-y color.
So, so just to orient us in this, um, exhibit, to the left is facing Weston Canal. Is that true?
Behind us and left, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Exactly, sorry. This was 11?
Yeah, that was A11.
A11? And then this is A12, and this is showing, uh, the building up a little bit aerial. Again, same sort of perspective with the canal behind us, but it's showing the, uh, green roof. It's showing, uh, the smaller, um, entry pavilion right there, if you will, the entry, entry section of the building with the ceremonial stair leading up to the main reception on the second floor as well as on the first floor. And, uh, it shows the biophilic walls.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, board, board questions? Ted?
Ted, I don't think your mic is on, is it, is it on?
It isn't, yes, it is.
Now it is.
As, as if the roof is going to be up, down, up, down, up, um...
Well, yes, that's, we're having internal drainage along the columns. It's a 30-by-30 column grid with some internal drainage there. So what's happening is, um, at... The arrows point to low points. At the low points would be drains along certain column grids. With high points, I have a section that I can show that in section. It's not a substantial, um, change in elevation. It's, it's really just for the structure. Uh, I guess this will be A13.
Now, that's what I was wondering about was how, how much of a slope that was involved.
No, it's, it, it literally is just enough for, uh, the, the half-inch on, on 12 to get the rain, uh, to get the water to the drains and, uh...
It won't be very perceptible and there's no danger of the, the soil washing down.
No, that, 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 like, have you ever been stuck on the highway? And, and you see like, along the asphalt or something, you see like this little tuft of, of growing, you know, like this little area of stuff growing and you're like, how does this survive? That's literally the stuff we're putting on the roof here. When we were doing the Javits Center, I requested a sample, uh, sent to us, uh, from, um, I think it was, uh, I don't remember who the company was, but they, they sent us a four-by-four panel. Uh, and they sent it at the end of the day, Friday, before the Martin Luther King Day weekend. And all the offices turn off their heat on the, on the Saturday and Sunday, and no one was in the office on Sunday, I mean, on Monday, because it was a day off. So I didn't open the box, the FedEx box was sitting closed in the cold for three days. I got there on Monday morning, I opened it up and the stuff was still alive. It never dies. It, it's, it's really pretty incredible. If it does die, again, it's a four-by-four panel that someone literally, somebody just [bleep] up all the drainage mats and everything just all connect in and, and integrate in. It's, it's really a, a fantastic system, I can't say enough about it. Um, it, it works.
So how, how thick is it?
It's probably about eight inches thick.
Eight inches, yeah, okay.
This is, I mean, graphically, I just have it as a, as a poche or a red, red zone, but, uh, this is a thicker roof than you would normally see on a warehouse. Uh, especially, uh, a spec warehouse where we don't know if it's going to be cold storage or unconditioned, uh, you know, you typically, it's just a metal pan and some waterproofing on top, you know, pretty thin.
So what plants grow on it?
Well, I'm, I'm proposing a cedum, which is a variety of different types of plants, but they're, 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 um, pollinators and, uh, they're very hardy. It's not a moss, but it's sort of, it, you would weed it out of your sidewalks. It's that stuff, you know? It's the stuff that no one wants, but we love it up here. And the, and the bees and birds love it.
Yeah, I know they, I think they send up a stalk with a flower on top. Yeah, it depends on the species.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Oh, for the, the green wall, another plant I would suggest thinking about is bittersweet.
Ah, yes.
Is that, that, it grows up trees beautifully, more beautifully than the trees appreciate.
But is that the sucker kind or the, you know, that's the trick. We don't want the kind like an ivy, you know, that attaches itself to something because?
It wraps around.
It wraps around, so that would be good.
Yeah, yeah, and it'll be very green. And then in the fall, I think you get a little orange.
Yeah.
Well, check it up with your plant consultant.
I will, I will, thank you. Yeah, definitely we want to work with them.
It's very native, I have it trying to grow around me. So, anyway, as, as you heard at the public session, the environmental commission is very appreciative of green roofs. We were just overjoyed to see this come in with a green roof.
Well, thank you, I mean, it really is, uh, a fifth elevation. You know, people do see the roof regardless of whether you believe it or not, you know, it exists. And, uh, like, like, like the client said, if we're building it anyway, we might as well make it work. And, uh, this is something that actually helps the building. It's not, it, this isn't, uh, you know, a, like Mr. Potato Head where you stick all these little things on it and it's still just a potato. You know, this is, you know, this is, this works, this does stuff. That, we would have to increase the amount of heating and cooling, for example, or we'd have to change the roof more often. There would be a lot of, eh, eh, operational expenses that this is reducing.
So you're, you're not planning to air-condition the bulk of the warehouse?
We, we don't know the, um, the user yet. Uh, there's always going to be some conditioning, but typically on, on a standard dry warehouse, uh, it, it isn't as conditioned as a office space. It's another reason why the office is lower, uh, so that you don't have to, you know, you don't want to have a 40-foot-high office and have to air-condition that, you know, it's, it's...
Yeah, what we've, we've had testimony in other warehouses that they plan to air-condition the office and not the bulk of the building.
Exactly.
So, it's sort of the, the normal practice. I was just, if somebody came in and demanded air-conditioning, then where would you put the, the equipment, the heat exchangers?
We, we, we would, we would, uh, we would eat, put it on the roof. We could suspend stuff inside, uh, inside the building. There's also the, um, areas on the two, on top of the two, um, under the two bustles where we don't need as much ceiling height, where they've, uh, right now, um... right now, I've proposed that the HVAC for the office space to happen above these bathrooms with these, I call them storage, but they're all probably going to end up becoming mechanical rooms. Every time an architect puts a storage room in, it ends up becoming a a mechanical room. That's our engineers. But but that's that's where we're proposing here. We would, we would just make sure, we wouldn't want to compromise the design of the building with with any sort of the aesthetics of the building and what we're trying to do with with these. So we would make sure it's properly screened in place so that it is non non intrusive. Again, with with it being a spec building, it hasn't been planned out yet.
Any other questions from the board? If not, we probably, oh, Jen, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Just a few clarifying questions. Would you mind going back to A ten, please? That was like the outside.
Yes. This one?
Uh, I think it's A nine. That that one.
Yes.
Yes. Um, is there going to be a sidewalk walking into that front entrance there?
There is. I this was a big, I I have to tell you, this was a big dilemma on my point on whether or not I wanted to include the site information or not. And I felt like I wanted to keep the site information all on Dynamics drawing so that there wasn't any coordination problems. So as we get, after approval, I will coordinate and make sure that I have all the sidewalks and everything put in these into these renderings.
Okay.
But as it stands right now, it it does not show any of the landscaping or the site improvements.
Okay, and and to that end, and maybe that relates to that as well, with the parking lot that's in the back for, you know, employees or workers that are going to be there, is there a back entrance that they'll be able to walk in? Or again, will there be some sort of tow path for them to walk to the front?
Yes, there is a series of entries all along the the facade of the building. And, you know, we do have this this other office entry here that we could provide a pathway along the west side of the building to or get to.
I just didn't want to see them walking out in the street where the the trucks are coming by, so.
Absolutely, absolutely, no. And the reason why on, actually, I'm going to show this one, the reason why there's no doors on on the south end is because we have another biophilic wall there. Because that faces the six hundred feet away, it is facing the residential screen that as well. So there's a biophilic wall along this whole elevation, a biophilic wall all along this elevation. And then the biophilic wall, as much as we can fit along this elevation that works within the, you know, we want to make sure we provide enough daylight into the office space so that it's a little bit more piecemeal. You're welcome.
I'm just curious. I'm wondering if you could talk a little bit about the maintenance of the green roof? Like, who's in charge of that? Like, what does that look like yearly or?
Well, it pretty much doesn't need anything. But operationally, you know, just like anyone maintaining any roof or any building, you know, there's no such thing. Deferred maintenance doesn't mean no maintenance, right? You know, you do have to maintain it. It's the same way you maintain a car or anything else. There is standard maintenance to it where, you know, you just go out there and you'd walk along it and make sure that there's nothing dead. And and usually if there's dead, then you just order a new tray. And you you literally, you just pick it up and replace it. It's 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 a great system.
And would the tenant have to do that or the building owner?
I I think that's a lease agreement.
Okay.
How do you get to the roof?
There would be a roof access hatchway. One of the stairwells could probably go to the roof with a hatch above. Typically, yeah, there's no, there's no firefighter requirement to have a stairwell to the roof. And we didn't want to put one all the way up because then that's another eight feet above above the forty feet. If you require it or would like it, that's something we can do. But typically, it's through a laddered hatch. And it would be through the smaller, the the office area, which is it would be through here, so you wouldn't have to go up so high. You would just, you wouldn't have to go forty feet up. You would only have
From the storage area, quote unquote.
Yeah, quote unquote, storage area. See how it gets eaten up already?
Mr. Chairman, I have a maybe a more boring site plan question, and maybe this is really more for the engineer. I'm going to get back to the issue of the trucks. A larger truck is is going to show up to this site. It's just going to happen. There's going to be a miscommunication, whether it's the first year or the tenth year. What walk through the board through what will happen if a larger truck shows up to that site?
I will, I will say that our traffic engineers are next
Okay, then that's
witness, so that may be, that may be a question for the traffic engineer.
All I would say is they can't hit the building. It's beautiful green building.
All right, we're good. Can proceed to
Thank you.
Your planner.
Corey, please come up. Oh, okay.
And before, before you start, as a planning, his testimony is planner, can I ask him one question that would probably fall more under the engineer hat?
We are, we are going to go to our traffic expert, but of course, please, please.
Oh, oh, all right. No, I'll I'll wait. I'm sorry. I forgot. Your order.
I solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God.
I do.
Name and address, please.
Certainly. It's Corey, C O R E Y. Last name's Chase, C H A S E, with Dynamic Traffic, located at two forty-five Main Street in Chester, New Jersey.
Ever been qualified by this board previously?
I have, most recently on the Schoolhouse Road application.
Do your credentials change in any way since then?
They have not.
Accepted.
Thank you. As part of our involvement in the application, we did prepare a traffic impact study, which was previously submitted to township dated February twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two. We also worked with Mr. Sharrow and his group on reviewing the site access, circulation, as well as the requested roadway improvements along Weston Canal Road that were asked for by Somerset County. Certainly one of the most notable improvements along our site frontage along Weston Canal Road. And I'm referring to applicants A three, just for reference. We will be providing a dedicated westbound left turn lane into the proposed warehouse facility. You can see in yellow the gore striping, and then in white, you can see the two arrow and only striping indicating that there will be a dedicated westbound left turn lane to provide dedicated left turn access to this facility. So we won't be in a situation where vehicles and or trucks making a left turn in this facility would be doing so out of a live travel lane. They'll have their own dedicated turn lane to make those turning maneuvers. As Mr. Sharrow mentioned, we did have some detailed coordination with Somerset County regarding the driveway geometry specifically, which is what led us to that, providing the overall driveway width of forty-five feet. You know, it's the county required, as expected, that those truck turning movements both into and out of the driveway are required to do so wholly within the the lane. So no encroachment into oncoming traffic will be provided as a result of trucks ingressing and egressing the proposed driveway. And again, that's really the reason for the oversized driveway width. It's consistent with good engineering practices as well, but you know, it was certainly requested by the county and supported by our design. As you've heard me testify to previously, you know, we we look at the traffic generation data published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers in the Trip Generation Manual. The current edition of the Trip Generation Manual is eleventh edition. And you can see on Table one, which is located on page four of our report, we summarize the peak hour traffic volumes that would be generated by this facility. As was discussed earlier, it is proposed to be a sixty-two thousand five hundred square foot warehouse facility, speculative in nature at this time. Tenant is currently unknown. As was also discussed and noted, we do only provide six loading bays. So certainly, from what the board has seen on a lot of prior applications, the overall building size and certainly the amount of loading stalls that are proposed are on the smaller side of what we've seen with other warehouse applications in the area. As you can see, the site in totality is projected to generate a maximum of only thirty-four trips during the peak hour. And as you've heard me testify to previously, the NJDOT, the New Jersey Department of Transportation, they have identified a threshold of one hundred additional trips during a peak hour as being what would constitute a significant increase in traffic. So we're approximately one-third of that threshold for what would be considered a significant increase in traffic correlates to approximately one trip every two minutes during the peak hour. So certainly not a significant impact in traffic on the adjacent roadway network. We did still feel that it was prudent to conduct a pre and post development analysis of the two adjacent signalized intersections along Weston Canal Road, at Randolph Road and at Schoolhouse Road. Just to see even though that the site was projected to generate what we would not determine a significant increase in traffic, if there would be any resulting impacts on the operations of those intersections. Those results are summarized on Table four, which is located on page six of our report. And again, you can see that the pre and post development analysis during the weekday morning and weekday evening peak periods indicates that there's no degradation in level of service at the intersection with and without this development. So those two adjacent signalized intersections will continue to operate at the levels of service they do now, even with the construction and additional traffic generated by this proposed development. We also did a level of service analysis at the proposed set access point along Weston Canal Road and found that that was going to operate at acceptable levels of service. That westbound left turn lane will be approximately a hundred feet in length. So more than adequate to accommodate even two tractor trailers, if necessary, could be stacked there, waiting to turn left into the site and wouldn't spill back out onto the the westbound traffic. So the the turn lane's been designed to promote safe and efficient access to the facility. And again, just given the limited traffic that's going to be projected to be generated by this facility, no detrimental impacts to the adjacent roadway network. As Mr. Sharrow mentioned, we are providing fifty-two parking stalls on site, which is consistent with the township's requirement for this facility. And we are providing a total of six loading bays to accommodate the anticipated truck traffic to the facility. That's all I had for direct. I don't believe that there are any specific comments in the engineers or the the planning review letter. I did note that we did receive the the review memo from the police department and they had no comments on the application. I'd be happy to touch on Mr. Healy's comment from earlier about what happens if a larger truck enters the facility. Just, you know, based on our experience, based on, you know, the way, especially a facility of this size, given that it's a smaller facility, it only has six loading bays. You know, you're certainly going to be looking at a tenant that's more of a niche warehouse facility. You know, this isn't going to be a large fulfillment center with trucks going in and out of this facility all day. It only provides six loading bays. Any tenant that's going to look to go into this facility is going to look at the size of the truck court and immediately know that it wasn't designed to accommodate, you know, the WB sixty-seven, the larger tractor trailers. There is maneuvering area that if a WB sixty-seven was to drive on the site, there is an area for that truck to maneuver to access the loading dock and then turn around and get back out of the site. It's just obviously not going to do as efficient of a turning maneuver as the WB fifty, which is what the the loading area was designed for. But, you know, certainly a facility of this size, and with this amount of loading docks, you may even end up with a user that only uses single-unit trucks or something of that nature. You know, it's not, again, as I mentioned, you know, a fulfillment center where you see the loading bays along an entire wall of the building or even a crossdock facility where you see loading bays on both sides of the building. It's, you know, certainly has been designed to anticipate limited loading activity associated with the site.
Let me, let me, let me ask this then. So I, can they, can they turn into the site? Could a larger truck turn in?
It could, yes.
Okay. So then, when they're, I'm assuming they can't go around the building? Or or is that wrong?
We were not designing this to assume three hundred and sixty tractor trailer circulation throughout the site. It's been designed to accommodate an emergency vehicle going around the site, but even the WB sixty or WB fifty trucks are anticipated to to, you know, just utilize this loading area. And then when they exit the loading area, to turn right and head back towards Weston Canal Road.
Okay, so it'll be kind of like, so they'll show up, so it when when that eventually does happen, it'll be almost like that scene from Austin Powers, where he's trying to turn and he's going back and forth, but they'll eventually get out.
It 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 will be quite that bad because you still have
I'm exaggerating, of course, but he'll have to make a number of more turns in order to get back out. Maybe he'll learn his lesson not to come with a larger truck.
And not necessarily, depending on, you know, I, you've heard me testify to this too, you know, we designed, we put multiple loading bays in these facilities to make it more efficient, you know, from a loading and unloading perspective, so that you don't, a a truck doesn't show up and there aren't five trucks there and it has to, you know, back into the middle loading bay, which, you know, even for an experienced truck driver, you know, pot gives them a little bit of pause for concern. So, you know, in all likelihood, if that truck was to back in and there was a, the loading bay next to it was vacant, you know, it it could make that swing out in one turn. Because there is still seventy feet of distance between the the loading area and the far curb line. So the WB sixty-seven is only seventy-two feet in total length, so there is sufficient room for that truck to maneuver. Again, you know, we reduced the overall size of the loading area because we're only anticipating accommodating WB fifties. You know, that's what we're designing the site for, and we don't need that extra impervious coverage. But there is the maneuvering area there that a larger truck, if it was to come on site, it wouldn't be in a situation where it's stuck and it couldn't go anywhere.
So I guess what what I'm, the reason I'm asking this is really the main concern is the driveway. And you've said that they can get into and out of the site. I just want to make sure we're not in a situation where if that larger truck shows up, it's going to be, its tail is going to be sticking out into Weston Canal Road.
No, sir. The the driveway, the forty-five-foot driveway width is sufficient to accommodate that truck making that turn. And there isn't a situation where, you know, it wouldn't be able to, if it was coming westbound on Weston Canal, it wouldn't be able to make that left turn maneuver into the site. And even as you enter the site and then you you have that turn to head back towards the west direction, you know, it would still be able to make that turn as well.
All right, thank you.
I had three questions. Now I have two because you answered the queuing distance. As you recall from being on and and many other warehouse applications, we almost always get the variance for the truck court parking width. And I just made a comment to Jim, this is one of the few applications for a warehouse I haven't seen it. And I assume that's because of what you're saying of being a smaller use and fewer bays, things like that.
That's correct. And, you know, typically, we're looking at, you know, a much more, a lot more bays to serve. And you want to accommodate that WB sixty-seven and you want to have it even be a little bit wider to accommodate that because maneuvering those trucks and even the situation where you have mult bays facing each other, you want to have as much flexibility as possible. Here, we've, we've made the concession that we know we're going to just be designing to accommodate smaller trucks and therefore we're comfortable in reducing the width of that loading area.
The other question I had, last question, is you mentioned the two intersections that you analyzed for level of service. One being Schoolhouse in Weston Canal, the other being Randolph in Weston Canal. Did you look at Cotton Tail in Weston Canal?
We did not, sir, no.
Because, I mean, Schoolhouse in Weston Canal, I really hope a truck wouldn't get down that far. Like, there's really no place to go. I mean, you go over the bridge into Manville or wherever. I mean, there's really no need to go down that way, right? You you would head back the other way. And since this warehouse is located on Weston Canal Road, we assume you would probably not impact Cotton Tail much. But going back towards two eighty-seven, coming from two eighty-seven, I can't imagine you would have, you would not have some level of impact on that intersection.
It would be, and really, if you look at the trip generation breakdown, the majority of the traffic associated with this warehouse is going to be passenger vehicle in nature. And that was really why we chose to study the intersection to the east and to the west, because that's going to have the most impact from a passenger vehicle perspective. You know, it's going to dissipate the further away you get
Yeah.
from the site. So analyzing those two intersections, showing that there is no impact. And again, you know, we've even taken the position on certain applications, you know, obviously not this one, that something that generates this limited amount of traffic doesn't even require a full traffic study.
Right.
But we, you know, choose to be prudent and provide the board with this information to show that even if we do this analy, the analysis of those two adjacent signalized intersections, it still shows that there's no impact.
I, I'm, because I'm, for warehouses, I'm always more concerned with the trucks, because that is the use. Passenger vehicles don't concern me at all, because office part is a minor amount of any warehouse application, otherwise it'd be an office building. So and yeah, I mean, I I would, if you could do that analysis and just like provide it to the board, post hoc, I mean, if there's any sort of numbers that you can back up what you're saying?
Certainly, you know, we could certainly supplement our report with an analysis of that intersection.
I mean, it is, it is a county road on Weston Canal, so they, the county and and Sammy isn't here tonight, but he would have had, he would probably have known. But they they would really have to weigh in. If I thought the truck traffic was going to burden Cotton Tail more, which I don't, then then, you know, I I would, I would probably be a little more insistent on that. But here, you're using it just to go to and from two eighty-seven.
Correct.
That's all I have. Yeah, of course.
One of your findings is that the intersection of Weston Canal Road and Randolph Road will operate at a level of service D. What is the current level of service?
It's also D.
It is. All right. Thank you. All right, thank you.
Seeing no take, other takers from the board?
Just to recall Mr. Sharrow to provide planning testimony, please.
And before you're qualified as a planner, just, just let me get this one engineering question out of the way, which has been touched on. So, and I just want it on the record, since it is a spec warehouse. Given the size, you, you already, I think your architect already mentioned what it can't be used for. It'd be a very small warehouse. I, I would just like the engineer to opine on that because it's more of an engineering than an architecture question, if you, you see where I'm going. So can you just kind of put that in the record at what you, what you think, because you know, we have people come up from the public and they've done their research and they list, you know, all kinds of technical stuff that warehouses can be and, and, you know, refrigerated and all this. And we sit here for a long time and, you know, not quite sure what we're hearing. So if you could kind of-
I think the main point here is the distribution. This, this size-
Yeah.
This size warehouse and that size loading bay court is not for distribution. This is going to be a smaller spec where you have, you know, considered more of a light warehouse coming in and out of here. You know, like, like previous architect and Mr. Chase said, you know, you have those million square foot warehouses with, you know, 100, 100 loading spaces on each side. That's, that's not what we're going for here. We're going for that smaller warehouse, that smaller use with not the distribution of, of, you know, big products like you see in some of these bigger warehouses.
So perhaps more of a local distribution than a regional one?
Yeah, you know, yeah, more, I would say more of a local, more of a regional, maybe, you know, I, I, I don't even want to opine on the type-
Right.
But, you know, it's just something that's, that doesn't have that, that large truck in, truck out, truck in, truck out, you know? Something that, you know, comes, delivers to the warehouse and then leaves the warehouse. So-
Can't be a fulfillment center, can't be refriger, not refrigerated kind of, I mean, I don't know, maybe what it couldn't, maybe it's easier to state what it couldn't be.
Uh, I would just say not, not the distribution type warehouse.
Okay.
You know, I don't want to, I don't want to preclude a refrigeration-
Right, right.
... warehouse here, you know what I mean? We, we, it's not currently called for in architecture, but as he said, it could switch over to more refrigerated type use, so.
Yeah, ask more to get testimony on so that, you know, the public and us know, know what it can and cannot be. This question comes up all the time, so I'm just getting out of here. Thank you.
I think, yeah, I think I already did my planning qualifications.
You did.
So, still under oath. Matthew Sharrow, Dynamic Engineering. So I'm going to make this quick since we only have the one variance. And it's, you know, more technical in nature than, than, than anything. It is for the 45 foot wide drive aisle at Weston Canal Road. 36 foot is permitted. There was another, just to put this on the record, there was another variance noted in the letter, but we are eliminating that variance by putting the solid six foot high fence along the pack zone. So we are eliminating that variance. I think we, there was discussion on what that would be, whether it be natural colors or wood. So, you know, that's, I believe that would be up to the board. We can, you know, we can accommodate what the board feels there, but we will get rid of that, eliminate that variance. So I believe that the driveway variance would be a C2 variance or a flexible C variance. This type of variance can be granted if it is shown that the purposes of the municipal land use law would be advanced by the deviation from the zoning ordinance and if the benefits of the deviation would substantially outweigh any detriment granting the variance. So granting the variance is a two-pronged test, not a two-pronged negative criteria test. First prong is determining if the variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. As I, you know, we're going to, I'm going to wrap it up again. We've talked about it, all of us have talked about it. But the wider driveway has zero impact on the Western Canal corridor as well as adjoining properties. So I think that-
Zero negative impact.
Zero, sorry, zero negative impact, yes.
Has a positive impact.
Yeah. And then the second prong is determining if granting the variance would impair zoning ordinance. As Mr. Chase said, the wider driveway provides a safe and secure ingress and egress for the W 50 design vehicle. The wider driveway does not impair any other zoning requirements such as impervious coverage or, you know, setback to a property line. So it, you know, it's just the one variance imposed here. So with that said, it's my opinion that the general welfare, welfare would be, would not be impacted by granting this variance and that the benefits of the deviation would outweigh any detriment that the variance was granted tonight.
Substantially outweigh.
Substantially outweigh, yep.
That's the test and the statute.
Yes. So pretty straightforward as far as the, the planning tests go here.
Any, any questions from the board from the plant, for the planner? All right. So you're, you're wrapped?
That concludes our presentation, thank you.
I'll make, yeah. I'll make a motion to open to the public for any comments on this application.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Open to the public.
Hi, Robin Sedam, 54 Skilman Lane. Just a couple of questions. You talk about the fence on the southern border or southeastern border. Why, why does there need to be a fence there? You know, the one you're talking about, is it green or white or?
Right, right. And which we actually didn't sort of address with the architect, but I'm, I'm not going to go back there. I'm just going to say, you work it out with township staff. It, it's part of the scenic corridor ordinance, I do believe, Mark, for the, for the fence?
No, there's the, the, it's from the Schedule Six. So when a, something in the BI zone adjoins a residential zone, which the property to the, well, basically where you see the, you can kind of see the ball field there, that property wraps around this site to the south and west. So while looking at this plan, to the, to the left and to the top, that's the portion that adjoins the residential zone. So they have to have that 50 foot buffer with the landscaping and the six foot high solid fence.
Okay.
And the reason they don't have to have it to, on the plan to the, to below is because that's also in the BI zone. So you don't have to screen another 50 foot buffer to another property in the industrial zone.
It was just my thought that a fence is going to crowd those plantings, looking at that design anyway. You've got shrubs or trees right there. You have a fence right up against it. It's going to impact the effectiveness of the landscape, but I guess it doesn't matter if you'd require a fence. My next, my other question is the black and gray driveway. You indicated that the black is the impervious and the gray is the pervious. But the, the pervious is only there along the one side, not around the back? Or is it just colored?
Correct. It was only needed along, to meet the requirements, it was needed along this portion of the driveway.
Okay. And because of cost, you only put it there where the impervious is less expensive for you, is that why?
I-
Because the trucks are not going behind the building, correct?
The trucks do not go behind the building.
So that could be impervious all around.
My guess is, the answer is the, the fire, fire. Generally, they will not let us put pervious materials. John Howse seems to be fairly, we've fought this battle many times, against that just because of the weight of fire trucks and things of that nature. They, they don't want them, and my guess is they, the only reason they agreed to what was there, which actually to me is almost, almost borders on shocking and I am glad to see it because, I mean, it does, it is that, you know, they have better access there because that's not, that's not where you're, you know? And it's not, it's not tight up against your, right? So, so they probably allowed it there.
Okay.
That, that's generally where, where that comes from.
And last, I guess, on the loading dock area, as we're looking at the drawing here on the right-hand side of the loading dock, there are plantings there as I look at the plans. There, it's holly, 24 to 30 inches high and viburnum. I think if we can encourage anything that grows a little taller, so in the scenic corridor, you're not looking at the side of the trucks. It was most notable in the, the architect's elevations. I realize there were shrubs, there will be shrubs and there were no shrubs in his elevation, but those trucks stand us, you know, fairly high. If the landscapers could look at maybe something that grows a little taller to provide more screening from the road, it might be helpful.
We could definitely look in this, I'll zoom in a little bit.
Thank you.
Screen space, you're talking. Yeah, we could definitely look at some, 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 some larger, better screening shrubs in this area. You're welcome.
If, if, just, if, just use a microphone, you can use that one. No, I mean, the one, the podium.
I also want to just point out that the, the loading dock is four feet lower than that, that planted area because the trucks have to be lowered so that helps also.
Hi, Jan Brant, 22 Bryant Court. I have a few questions. The residential, there's a home close by to the warehouse, right? Where, can you point that out to me? Okay. And I think that's, that's 555 Weston Canal Road, am I right?
I don't know the actual address, but-
Okay. Have you had any feedback from that person or heard from that person?
Not personally.
Okay. I, I have a feeling, because when I looked at the records of the notification list of who, who was notified for that property, it seems that that property recently closed like May 2023. So I'm wondering, you have a different name than the property that's listed on there? So I'm just wondering if in that process of, you know, them buying and selling, like if the person has no clue. I actually went, I live right down the street from there and I went by there before I came here. I thought maybe those gentlemen were related to it, but I'm just wondering if you guys got in touch with the right person who lives there because they probably want to know about it.
For the record, the applicant is entitled to rely on the 200 foot list that the tax assessor furnishes to them. And there's always a delay, okay? And sometimes the delay is months between the time of the sale and the time that the township assessor is told by way of a copy of the deed that there has been a conveyance.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. And, and one of the things I want to note is I know that through B9 property, there was a notification list and there wasn't everybody correctly notified on that list. And I had heard from Mr. Healy that sometimes the computers aren't updated, so it also could be due to that. And it's a shame that that notification list, that there could be somebody living right next door to this warehouse within, in 200 feet that isn't notified because the township's computers aren't updated. So I just want you to note that as well. And that was something Mr. Healy told me a while ago with the notification list.
That was related to a subdivision. The owner of 555 Weston was notified. If there was a very recent sale, at the time the applicant, we, at the time that the, we provided the 200 foot radius list, the owner of 555 Weston was notified and the applicants provided a certified mail receipt to the owner.
Okay.
So if there's been a subsequent sale, that, that's, we can't control that.
Okay.
All right. Your, your issue is with the state legislature. So let's move on from that.
Okay. Well, it's, it's good for the planning board to know that that person who lives right next door doesn't know about it.
But we couldn't do anything about it. And if you take a look at that, if you take a look at that house and where it is, though, I mean, that, that house was severely impacted by, you know, Summer Fields Development, which backs right up to it. Certain, they, certainly any reasonable person would look, I certainly do, about my house, you know, what could be built there and would know it's a BI zone and would know the general area and the amount of traffic in front of it.
Is that a BI zone?
Yeah.
The, the house that's-
That's why this is before the planning board.
No, no, I mean, the house that's located there.
No, that's, that's the, that's, I think it's the A zone or the Canal Preservation Zone.
Exactly. That, that was changed in 2020 with, so, yeah, no, that's not a BI zone, that's an-
No, no, it doesn't matter what the zone is. I'm just saying they're surrounded by that zone. So you can't, I mean, unless you're blind, literally, you can't help but notice where you are.
Right. But, like I said, okay.
All right, let's move on from that since it's been, it's been, the township fulfilled their obligation.
Okay. All right. Good to know. With the, the traffic person mentioned something about the left hand, that they're, you're going to make a left hand turn lane on Weston Canal Road? And I'm just wondering, I, I, that road, I just drove up it a little while ago and I'm wondering how that's going to be done.
Okay, let, let me take that because it was provided in your testimony. There's going to be a 100 foot dedicated turn lane making a left that can accommodate the queuing of two tractor trailers. That was the testimony.
So there's going to be three lanes on that highway? And, and how, okay, all right, that's, that's good to know. I heard him say it and I just know that it's a very, looks like a very narrow.
Well, that's why I wondered because if, if you heard him say, I figured you wouldn't have asked the question.
Excuse me?
I figured if you heard him say it, you wouldn't ask the question because that was the testimony.
I thought it was a mistake. I was like, because, now, I, I thought that, and I think it was Mr. Vornlocker who said that in the past, our township manager, that trucks weren't allowed in between Randolph and Schoolhouse Road. No?
No.
Okay. All right. With the driveway that you're providing for this warehouse, can, well, when trucks exit it, can they turn right or left out of that driveway?
They can turn both right and left, but, you know, just given the location of the property relative to the adjacent highway network, you know, we would assume that all trucks would turn right and head back towards 287.
Okay. I know that you, sometimes the planning board has special driveways they put in because they're concerned about trucks turning the other way. And you mentioned, the planning board mentioned that if the truck goes further up Schoolhouse, they're going to hit Manville and, and whatnot. So I don't know if they're recommending a special only right-hand turn lane because they do recommend that with other warehouses, so.
I, I mean, that was a genesis of my question to Cory on whether you analyzed the cotton, yeah, the Cotton Tail Weston intersection. But that's not a bad point in terms of doing like a dedicated right, right, right turn only out for trucks. I mean, obviously car movements we don't care about. I don't know if you can sign it so that it said trucks, trucks, right hand only, something like that. Because I, I, I would agree, we don't want them going up toward, because there's really no place to go. You're, you're either going to go all the way down Weston Canal and, and, and end up-
Mr. Chairman, I want to caution you on that. We tried to do that on Elizabeth Avenue and have a dedicated right turn out of, out of a facility onto Elizabeth Avenue so they could, actually, we tried to make it a dedicated left turn so they couldn't go right toward Amwell Road and the county turned that down. Second, I don't know if you're, if anybody's aware of it, but there are two huge warehouses coming up for an approval right across that river in Manville that, that already are talking about using the Causeway Canal Road to get to 287. So I'm not sure, we can try, we can try and limit the turn, but I don't think we're going to be able to limit truck traffic on Canal Road.
Maybe, maybe not. And by the, just to clarify, I wasn't asking for a dedicated, because you would need a full movement there because you're going to have cars and there's no reason, cars shouldn't go left. But if, if there could be a sign saying, you know, trucks right only, that would be fine. And that way you won't have to go back to the county to do anything because it doesn't impact the design of the driveway at all.
It's just a sign.
Yeah, it's just a sign.
With this warehouse, I, I heard you all mention that it's a spec warehouse. Is it going to be operating 24/7?
Because it's a speculative warehouse, we, we can't say the hours of operation.
Right. And I know someone from the planning board was questioning about one of your experts opining on what type of warehouse that was. Was that this gentleman right here?
Yes, it was.
Okay. And what's your name? Hi, Matthew. Good. So when you were opining on what type of warehouse and all, I'm just wondering your experience, I know you've built great design here and all, but your experience of what experience, I know you've built great design here and all, but your experience of what type of warehouses end up occupying, like, after the fact, do you, are you able to, it sounded like you didn't know much about what's-
Yeah, I'm not, I can't answer that, it could be-
Yeah, I, I asked the question, and, and I think, I think you answered it, so I'm, I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, they, they are spec, as you know, Jan, I'm sure from B-nine, the planning board does have the right to limit hours of operation, and, and I mean, but you have to consider where it is and, and what it is, you know? If, if it's a warehouse on, on Atrium Drive, like we just heard, I didn't, you know, have an issue with that, because nobody's gonna be bothered by twenty-four-seven-hour operation. If you have a warehouse closer to a residential zone, I would be much more prescriptive about hours of operation, and, and we can set those, and then you'd have to communicate to your client that that's, that's the hours you operate. I don't know how the board feels about doing it here, but I, I don't, I don't think it's a huge issue.
One of, one of the things that I'm thinking about as far as traffic goes, because I'm driving up and down that road, and there's air path there, and on weekends, they have big soccer tournaments all year round that pretty much stop the traffic.
Jan, we all, we all know what's there, again, this, this is not germane to anything, I mean, we all know, we live in the township, we live in the township.
Well, it's germane to traffic, okay, so you, you know that bad traffic, okay.
Yes, we absolutely know it, we, we don't need to be educated.
Okay, all right, well, there's a lot of traffic backup, and-
Yeah, there's a, there's a lot of traffic everywhere in this town, we know that.
Okay, the traffic engineer, were you aware of the air path and the traffic that it has on Sundays and Saturdays due to the soccer tournaments they have over there that's right next door?
We are, and these uses by their nature, they generate a very limited traffic activity on weekends, you know, there is the potential that there may be a skeleton crew on-site during those times, but it's certainly not, you know, your, your full staff.
Okay, and, and that's just another reason why probably turning down left would be a big mistake if it was on weekends, because that would just create a big pileup right over there, and that's where I was going with that, Dr. Ossini.
Let's be real, those are not, those, those functions are nowhere near every weekend, okay? And second, when they are functioning or having those functions, there's a police presence.
Correct.
All right, so I don't know that we need to do anything above and beyond to, to be concerned with that.
Well, I, 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 I mean-
And it's also a good two miles plus away.
But I solved that problem five minutes ago, and when the applicant agreed to put signage up saying trucks can be, trucks should be limited to right-hand turn, so we're done.
We, we covered it.
Okay, Mr. Thomas, it's not two miles away, it's, it's definitely not-
Well, we'll drive it and see.
Okay, good, it's definitely not two miles away, 'cause I remember on the-
All right, Jim, doesn't matter, it's taken care of.
Jim, wrap it up, please, with one more question.
All right, I'm looking at my questions, thank you.
Select your best one.
Are there any other warehouses that are off of Weston Canal Road that have to turn onto Weston Canal Road with WB-50 trucks?
I don't know why it would be relevant, but if anyone wants to answer the question, they can.
Just based on my review of the area, I would expect that, based on the size of those warehouse facilities, that they all have WB-67s, which is the larger-sized tractor-trailer going to those facilities.
Yeah, I guess what my point is, is that I don't think there's any other warehouses where they have a driveway where the trucks are turning right onto Weston Canal Road, I think it's-
That matters far less than the fact that every warehouse on Schoolhouse is gonna use, or in Cotton Tail's gonna use, and Schoolhouse for that matter, is gonna use Cotton Tail Road.
The, the one that, the Amazon one, and there's three total warehouses, don't they have an entrance on Weston Canal?
Yes.
I guess what I meant-
And there's, and there's one up toward, toward two-eight-seven, that's a newer one that turns, that's directly onto Weston Road, along with the huge public service facility with dozens of trucks, of public service trucks, that are, is directly onto Weston Road, there's a number of places.
So, let me, let me clarify, I guess what I remember Mr. Vornlocker, the township manager saying is that trucks aren't allowed past Randolph Road.
We've already covered that, the answer is that's not the case.
Okay, well, I, what I meant, I wanted to clarify my question, Mr. Clark, and, and just say, are there any, I guess there's no warehouses after Randolph Road where we were told that trucks weren't supposed to go past, that there's no, you know, trucks that are turning there. I think the road narrows further down, but I could be wrong, but thank you.
No, I mean, the township can control it in the future by imposing a weight limit, which they'd have to do in accordance, I think, with the county. I mean, I've talked to Bob Vornlocker about places in town where we want weight limits and, and things to control truck traffic, I don't recall this was one of them, but all of them that have come up weren't originally proposed as weight limits, and then, you know, things change, and you say, okay, you know, I don't want, I, I don't know what the causeway, the Manville causeway can, can take, but, yeah, I mean, I, in the future, if it's not already, they, they could, I'm not aware of any restriction now. But, to me, the bigger thing is not whether your driveway's on Weston Canal Road, the bigger issue is everything upstream on Cotton Tail, on Schoolhouse feeds into Weston Canal Road, because that's how you get to two-eight-seven. The driveway's the least of it. Any other questions from the public? If not, make a motion close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any summation you would like to make?
Just simply the, the relief we're seeking, obviously, is preliminary and final site plan approval, there's the one variance for the, the width of the driveway, which, as Mr. Chairman used so adequately put, that, that's really not the issue with the site, it's, it's more upstream, that, you know, we'd be concerned about traffic within the town. I know that there's likely a number of conditions that this board's going to impose in connection with any possible approval of this application, which we've adequately discussed with the board and are, are prepared to consent to those conditions. I'll, I'll briefly summarize, I don't want to step on the board's toes, but I, I heard a condition that we work out something with fence color with the town, perhaps rearranging trees at the rear of the property, working with CME to diminish the grade increase from the road, performing a, a post hoc Weston Canal and Cotton Tail traffic analysis, and signage for a right turn only, and I'm sure if I missed any, that the board will-
Yeah, I think, Robin, maybe these are the trees you're referring to, but Robin mentioned, they're like, make the trees larger where the, um-
Yes, yep.
If, if that's the same thing, but if it's not, then that too.
That one as well, yep.
And, and Jim has a list, so.
All right, let's see if we can run through them. The applicant will make a contribution to the township in lieu of constructing sidewalk along Weston Canal Road, the amount will be determined by an engineer's estimate furnished by the applicant and approved by the township staff. There will be condition that the maximum truck that will be permitted on the site is a WB-50, and every lease that the applicant or any successor to the applicant will utilize for a tenant will include that provision. Applicant will revise the plantings along what I call the rear yard line, and also because of a good comment that was made, we should also keep in mind the proximity of the fence and the life of those trees, so we should have enough room there. We are going to have a condition that the traffic report will be supplemented to study the Cotton Tail intersection, we also have all of our customary conditions, payment of real estate taxes, professional fees, et cetera, the condition for either an earth-tone vinyl fence or a wood fence to be worked out with the staff, applicant will better screen the loading dock, we will have a sign for right turns only by trucks, and we will work with CME to revise the grade of the driveway. Miss Sani?
A few suggested clarifications, so just to make clear about the fence, what I would suggest is that it should start opposite the, the, no, don't go back, opposite the driveway from the parking lot, should start somewhere around there, and then should go all the way back in wrapping around the building, because that is the portion of the site, and then wrapping around that eighteen-space parking lot, because that also adjoins the pack zone, so I'd make that clear. And I think there was some mention, whether it's, I'm not sure if it's reflected on the plant, architectural plans that were submitted, but I think there was a comment about the DRCC requiring that the building be taupe or light green in color, so you may want to kind of piggyback on the DRCC's suggestion, I think that would be called for considering that it's in a scenic corridor.
It did the DRCC in your, you said your, your, yeah.
Yes, they did, and I did mention that in my presentation.
Okay, I just wasn't sure if that's on, reflected yet on the plans that you have, but if not, it should be.
We'll, we'll just make, we'll just make it a, a condition, just to have the redundancy built in, I guess.
So, is the fence going to be inside the, the plantings or outside the plantings? I think it should be inside.
Inside meaning along, right along the driveway, and the, that, that's generally what I would recommend, so the fence is up against the parking lot and the driveway with the landscaping in front of it.
Yeah, and, and to Robin's comment, that gives you a better, a distance from the fence probably to not have it affect your landscaping, if you do it that way. I mean, you want the, the blocking of the, the visual blocking of the fence between different type uses, like was, like Mark had mentioned, you know, you want that blocking to happen, you know, immediately, so. With those conditions, I would make a motion to approve the application in accordance with any outside agency approval still pending.
Second.
Councilman in Barson?
Yes.
Theodore Chase?
Yes.
Erica Ensensio?
Yes. Yes, it is, yes.
Okay, Jennifer Ragnow?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
Rebecca Hilbert?
Yes.
And Chairman Ossini?
Yes. Thank you for a very nice presentation, very clear, and thank you for the green roof, that'll be some leverage, because we know it can be done, if somebody tells us, well, he just got passed, you don't have an ordinance, it could be done, so we have, we have proof.
Thank you.
Before we run away, Christine, do you want to just make an announcement, I, I think the next meeting coming up is a special meeting, yes, or no?
Yeah, the next, the next meeting would be August sixteenth, it's a special meeting, it was already advertised for, it's been listed in the newspaper, it's, should be up on our website, it is going to be here at the township. What I've been doing with you guys is when I'm sending out your weekly things, I'm putting right up on top where it's located, because we are going here, there, and everywhere, so.
We did notice that, so thank, so thank you.
So.
And I might have originally replied that I was tentative, I will, I will be there.
Okay, Mahir and Jennifer will not, and then Charles and you were tentative, and then-
We should have Mustafa back, hopefully.
He, for those of you, he was in Africa and he got stuck there, so he went in, not stuck, I don't know why, maybe not physically stuck, but I mean-
Not, not detained, or killed.
Work-wise, work-wise, he couldn't return, when he held up, well, he used the word stuck, that's why I used it, but, yeah, that's where he was, so he left in May, he did tell me he was going to Africa, but we had no communication after that, so that's, and he just sent me an email this morning saying he just returned, that he was working on something, so anyway, he should be returning back.
Can you, can you just let, he probably doesn't know about the special meeting, could you just remind him? You're probably gonna send it out all the, to the board, the-
I am, I'm preparing it this week to go out on Friday to you guys, okay?
All right.
Okay, I'll mark you now.
So, you know, and that's another reason, I know August is vacation time, unfortunately not for me, and, so I wanted to, I wanted to, I wanted to let you know I'd be here in case the, a quorum was difficult to come by, but I think we'll be all right.
I think we'll be, okay.
So, with that, motion to adjourn, and I'll make it, so just second it.
Second, yeah.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.